Good morning and welcome to the March 20, 2018, meeting of the Pima County Board of Supervisors. I'm glad you could all make it today. Roll call, please.
Supervisor Bronson?
Here.
Supervisor Christie?
Here.
Supervisor Miller?
Here.
Supervisor Valdez?
Present.
Chairman Elias?
Present.
Let the regent reflect that all members are present.
We're lucky and honored to have Pastor Joan Wiggins from Mount Cavalry Missionary Baptist Church with us today. Would all please rise for the invocation and the pledge allegiance to follow led by Supervisor Christie this morning.
Let us bow for prayer. Heavenly Father, Almighty God, we just begin by giving you all praise, glory, and honor. We welcome your presence in this place. Now, Lord, we just ask as this proceeding goes forward that words would come forth carrying wisdom and knowledge and understanding and a depth of seriousness for what's going on, not only in our city, Heavenly Father, but across the nation. We know that even this morning, there was another school shooting where lives were taken, at least one, I believe, the shooter himself and others were injured, Heavenly Father. We lift up the family of those who were injured. We lift up the families of those young people who are now uncertain about tomorrow, Heavenly Father, uncertain about what's going to happen on the next school day, and perhaps uncertain what even is going to happen in their neighborhood. These are troubling times. Yet in troubling times, Father, we thank you for the goodness that still exists. And so, we exalt you, dear Lord. We continually ask for your guidance. We continually ask, Heavenly Father, that you give us all deep compassion for those who stand in need, for the homeless, for the hungry, for those suffering from mental illness, Heavenly Father. Help us to focus on the right things, dear Lord. We love you. We praise you again. We welcome your presence in this place. In Jesus' name, amen. Hallelujah.
Please join me in reciting the pledge for our flag. Our pledge is-
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, pastors. A beautiful prayer you offered this morning. Thank you. Okay, we have one change to today's agenda. On page five, item 21. The correction is this item requires a supermajority vote of approval by the Board of Supervisors. So, we need to have four votes for that to pass. We have a great puppy with us here this morning who was entertaining us backstage. Her name is Ham, as in ham and cheese. But she's a real sweetie and hopefully she'll get adopted today as she becomes available.
Yeah, hopefully she gets adopted right here in this room.
We're trying to make it work.
Yeah, we were trying in the back room. We may have a taker, but if anybody here is interested. So, this is Ham. She's about four months old. She was actually just found just three days ago. She was running as a stray dog on Grant Road. So, she comes to us. She's very shy. And one of the things I want to talk about today is two things. One being our decompression program. From time to time, we get these dogs that come in that are just undersocialized. So, we actually have a team of volunteers that go forward and work with these dogs to get them more socialized. Other than the fact that she's this cute little four-month-old puppy, she would actually be a really good candidate for it because she's shy. She doesn't really know how to interact with people all that well. So, that would lead me to believe that she's probably been on the street for a little bit period of time. And again, if she's been on the street for any period of time, she's only four months old. So, most of her life has not been interacting with people. And the other component is we're getting into spring. Does everybody know what happens in the spring? Kittens and also puppies. And so, if you really like kittens and you really like to play with puppies, you can come foster them for us until they're ready to be adopted. And the rumor is if you adopt a mom with her puppies or a litter of puppies, you get your choice of which puppy you'd like to keep. So, there's a little added benefit on the backside if you want to step up and do it. Who, I see younger audience, college, high school? College, perfect. You guys all need pets. So, we have approximately 450 pets right now in our care. So, if just, you mean, very small fraction of your, you mean, student body came forward and adopted pets, all gone. Just saying.
I hear their grades improve when they get a dog. That's what I've heard.
I think they would because now you have a companion to stay up late nights with you. Right? Trying to get all that work done? So, again, if anybody's interested, you mean, talk with people. We're always looking for help. Come volunteer, come foster, come be part of what we're doing over at the Pima Animal Care Center. Every single day, every single week, we're here helping as many pets as we possibly can, just like Ham.
Well, thank you very much for bringing Ham down to us today. Bye, Ham. I'm sure that dog's going to go. So, if you're interested, you know, please speak up because that's a cute little puppy and she seems very nice. She has a good nature to her. She even let me pet her. Sometimes they say I don't get along with people so good either, so. We have a presentation. What's the pleasure of the board?
I'll move the item.
Second. Motion and a second to approve item five. Supervisor Bronson, I'd ask you if you'd go down and make a presentation.
Did we make a vote?
Oh, did we make a vote? We didn't make a vote. I was trying to get ahead of myself. Any objections? Hearing none. Motion carries. Stop the Bleed Day. We have Susan Kincaid here with us this morning. If you'd please come forward and, or your whole team, yeah, come on up. Might want to give us your name so that we get them. Thanks for coming out from Banner today. Good place, great place, saving lives, important to all of us.
All right. Proclamation. Whereas traumatic injury is the leading cause of death for people under 46 years of age, and whereas no matter how quickly professional emergency responders arrive on the scene of a traumatic injury, bystanders precede them, and whereas death due to traumatic bleeding can occur in less than five minutes, therefore, it is critical to stop the blood loss, and whereas the Stop the Bleed Initiative has the support of the White House, the U.S. Department of Homeland Security, and the American College of Surgeons, which recognize that everyone has the power to stop life-threatening bleeding due to injuries in the home, at industrial settings, or in cases of mass casualty events, and whereas state and local governments, medical groups, and healthcare organizations, regional and local first responders, and state coordinators share a mutual interest in informing the public that Stop the Bleed training is available to all. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Pima County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaim Saturday, March 31, 2018, to be Stop the Bleed Day and encourages all Pima County residents to participate in events and trainings in the life-saving principle of bleeding control and providing first aid until the arrival of emergency responders passed and adopted this 20th day of March, 2018. And you want to tell us a little bit about what this is and if, what events are taking place and how people can get training?
Mr. Chairman and Board, thank you for having us today. We are part of the Southern Arizona Stop the Bleed Coalition. Melissa Daniels is from UMC and Tom Tucker is from the airport. We have several different groups in the area that all come together to teach you, the citizen who is truly the first responder, how to stop the bleed in a situation. I just heard again today, there was another mass shooting. So, you never know when you're going to be in a situation where you may be the only person there that can save a person's life. You can bleed to death in less than five minutes. And so, we want this course to be just as prevalent as CPR. And as part of our initiative here in Southern Arizona for Stop the Bleed Day, we're having a class on March 31 from 10 to 12 at the Abrams Building down on South Campus on Aho and Country Club. There's flyers out by the door. We would love to just have that class filled to overflowing because like I said, y'all are truly the first responders and you can save a life because the worst thing than dying from a trauma is dying from a trauma that could have been prevented. So, thank you all.
Thank you. And if I'm curious, because we have a number of very active neighborhood associations, would you all be available? Would that training be available for them? And if they'd like to set something up, how would they do it?
Yes, ma'am. On that flyer, that name down there is my name. And so, you can just contact me. And we, as a group, we have plenty of folks that will be happy to come out. You bring the people and we bring the education.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you.
That's very good. Thank you. Let's give them a nice round of applause, please.
Thank you.
I remember Supervisor Carol's son Shane one day encountering a shooting in Chicago right in front of him. And because he knew what to do, he saved that young man's life. And it was really quite dramatic, but quick action by somebody who knows what to do can really make a big difference. And so, this is real. This is something that's important to all of us, especially on days like today. We're on to Call to the Public, item six. Everybody has three minutes. I'd ask you to please be, not to be repetitive and to keep this thing going because we have quite a few speaker cards for this morning. Our first speaker is Roger Scoref. Roger, thank you for spending your time here with us again this morning. And you have three minutes.
Yes.
You can pull the microphone towards you, sir.
Yeah, board members, supervisor. I guess now you're looking at giving away another $25 million worth of taxpayer money to your cronies. I hope today you all vote against it. Steve Christie, I hope you're really a Republican and you're going to vote against this stuff. I know your comrades here will vote for it. And then, another $4 million in upgrades just given out as a loan? It ain't even a loan. A loan would have interest rates. At least taxpayers would get something for borrowing their money out. Instead, you're just giving these people $4 million worth of our money to use for four years. They got to pay it back. Give me $4 million. Let me use it for four years. And then, I'll just pay you back without interest. And if they don't pay it back, who gets stuck? You people get stuck. This is how it operates. These people don't represent you. You're done when you voted no on the bond to fund these cronies. These people don't care. They disregard your vote. They threw it in the trash. And Chuck Huckleberry said, "We're going to give them the money anyway." That county courthouse is costing these taxpayers a lot of money. And then, we'd never get roads fixed. Our roads will never get fixed. The Sheriff's Department has to scrape for money to protect us. There's a lot of things that this money could be going towards other than financing your fund, the people that keep you here employed. It's time for us to get something back. That courthouse doesn't produce anything to us people living on the east side of the county and other parts of the county. It's not going to bring any jobs here other than government jobs. How about private sector? How about getting businesses going here through private funding rather than you picking the winners and losers in business? Helping out the people that want to start a mom-and-pop business here and get something going that will produce jobs through private sector? You wouldn't know anything about that because you never had a job. The only way you get a job is to sit up here, take our money, and hand it off to the Chamber of Commerce members, Jim Click members, U of A members, to steal our money and provide the booty to them. It's time to start investing in our county rather than the cronies. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scoref. Appreciate you being here. What I would add to your comments, though, is that Call to the Audience is the time. No, you can have a seat. You can have a seat, sir. Thank you. I am. You can have a seat, though. Call to the Audience is actually a time when members of the public can address the Board of Supervisors. So, we'd ask you to make your comments specific to ourselves and not the audience. Our next speakers, I'm going to call three people up who asked if they could come up together. Linda Leadberry, Stan Codwell, and Martha Michaels. You here, please? You each have three minutes.
My name is Martha Michaels. I live in District One, a District One neighborhood of Sabino Town and Country Estates, or STCE. My neighborhood roads have not had comprehensive road repair since 1986, 32 years ago. STCE's crumbling neighborhood roads are unsafe, unsightly, and detrimentally affect our homeowners' property values. STCE efforts to secure repaving for our roads started 13 years ago. Over the last five years, we have been here many times to request a solution for repair of STCE's failed roads. STCE residents have been disappointed several times when our advocacy and efforts have failed to produce the needed result, new pavement for our roads. Most recently, with this fiscal year's property tax increase for local road repair and the implementation of the Transportation Advisory Committee, we increased our advocacy for repair, attending many meetings and giving our input multiple times. This past December, once again, we were frustrated to learn that the outcome of all our advocacy and participation at that time produced no result to fix our crumbling and dangerous STCE roads. We left the December 19, 2017 PCBOS meeting thinking that we would not be repaid for many more years. However, recently, at the beginning of March, a few of our STCE residents were contacted by Murphy Woodhouse, a reporter for the Arizona Star, who writes the Monday Roadrunner column to give their opinion regarding a green asphalt pilot program for which STCE was being considered. No one in our community knew about this program until Murphy's Roadrunner report. STCE residents found this information to be extremely interesting. We immediately reached out to several county sources to gather information about this proposed pilot program, the green asphalt product, and Tucson Asphalt Company, and the pilot program funding and approval process that needs to occur. STCE is again hopeful that a solution may soon be available to repair our roads and thank Pima County personnel for exploring alternative pavement options. We give special thanks to Deputy Administrator Carmine DeBonis and PC DOT Director Anna Oliveras for being accessible and for spending their time to answer our many questions. Pima County is lucky to have these two new positive, knowledgeable, energetic, and solution-oriented people on its team. Administrator Huckleberry and supervisors, we thank you for your service and attention to this matter.
Thank you. Appreciate you spending your time here with us. Please give us your name for the record.
My name is Stan Codwell. I'm a resident of Sabino Town and Country Estates. Chris up. Okay, is this good?
That's fine.
Good. Okay, again, Sabino Town and Country Estates, and I'm a resident there. We have an HOA, we have county roads. And I want to talk, of course, about the road situation. We've been actively advocating for repair of roads for the last 13 years.
Go ahead and see. We're getting it turned on.
Okay.
Takes a minute to come on.
Yeah. This is an old chart that I used last year. So, we've been up to 13 years now. My next chart is more important.
No problem. We'll reset the clock for you, too.
No, that's okay. I don't think I'm going to take three minutes.
Okay.
I cede my time to the next speaker.
That one's on. It's starting to come on. Takes a minute to warm up.
Okay.
I'm the same way in the morning.
So, if you guys can see it, that's what. So, this is what we've, we've been active for the last 13 years and really active the last five, but started in 2005. Now, a week ago Monday, there was an article in the paper that described the new green asphalt and having a pilot program for our HOA as well as another HOA. Well, our roads are on life support, so we're naturally really interested in that. So, we did, looked into it ourselves. We've talked to county personnel, talked to Joe Herrick at Tucson Asphalt, who was their public relations person. And we've, from him, we got the name of a HOA representative in Blaine, Avita neighborhood, which has Tucson Asphalt, and it's been applied in three phases, starting in 2014. So, after that, four of our members, including two board members and the president of the HOA, went on a tour with Mr. Herrick. And we visited an area that had green asphalt applied in 2006. It looked good. We were excited. We're excited about that and about the application in 2014 through 2017. So, we liked what we saw. We liked what we heard, and we're ready. So, but we also heard rumors from a couple of sources that we may not have all our roads paved, the overlay, the green asphalt. We'd like to have them all done, not just half. And especially just don't do where our house is or we'd be in big trouble. So, all the roads. So, with that, we're going to, we're going to wait for the engineers of the Department of Transportation to do their due diligence so we know it's a bona fide product. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate you spending your time here. And our next speaker, yes, if you could please give you a name and a name, just a name for the record. I'm sorry.
I'm the wife, Linda Leadberg, homeowner. And my colleagues have stated many things here, so I should probably skip a lot of this. I'm here today just to tell you that two years ago, I stood in this very spot and I said, "Creative thought matters in dealing with this emergency, what has become an emergency situation." And we believe that the use of green asphalt rises to that criteria. And so, for that, we are really grateful to all of you. And thank you very much for considering our neighborhood as part of this pilot project. As you can see, we've done our due diligence in contacting people in the county, outside the county, people who are using the product. And we're very encouraged and feel very hopeful. As you all know, we're very deeply frustrated by what feels like a never-ending merry-go-round of dashed hopes for STCE. Nonetheless, we have been determined to remain positive and to work with mutual respect and cooperation towards everyone involved with this issue. And we're going to follow it very closely, work with you, work with the wonderful people in PC DOT who have really helped us immeasurably. And so, we want to just thank you for thinking outside the box, thinking creatively. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you spending your time here with us. Our next speaker is going to be Keith Van Heineken. Mr. Van Heineken, thank you for being here again and spending your time with us and addressing the board. You have three minutes. Please state your name for the record.
My name is Keith Van Heineken. And I refuse to die. Went out to Chuck's. Propagated a bit. The bike path. Sweet, feel good. Went out to Muriscos for lunch Saturday. Couldn't get in because of an armed robbery. Four men with rifles. That's what have all given us, not to mention the roads and debt. While I was at Muriscos, I heard a question. Does Richard Elias really support street gangs and MS-13? Inquiring minds want to know. And yet, there is no real media to ask. Have a nice day.
Thank you very much, Mr. Van Heineken. Appreciate you spending your time here with us. Our next speaker is going to be Jackie Kane. Thank you for being here, Ms. Kane. It's always a pleasure to see you. And please give us your name for the record.
My name is Jackie Kane. I live here in Tucson in Supervisor Elias's district. And I'm a volunteer for the Arts Foundation of Tucson in Southern Arizona. And first, I want to thank you all, Board of Supervisors and Mr. Huckleberry, for supporting the Arts Foundation. The most recent fiscal year, 2017, 2018, we received almost $111,000 from you to support the arts, and that was a base allocation from the county. Thirty thousand, thirty thousand, sorry. Thirty percent of that money is being used primarily to develop new online sources for resources for artists and arts organizations. 15% is for arts education. And the remainder, about 60%, is basically for administration to administer and promote these programs and also to manage the public art program, which currently has one full-time staff person and 26 current public art projects in the city and county. I'm here to ask you to increase our base allocation for the Arts Foundation within your budget. We request an additional $90,000 in our base allocation so that we can begin to support artists and arts organization across the county, not just in the city of Tucson. And that more, that 70% of that money would be given to grant-making, to support the actual artists and the organizations. And again, this is in the county. This would boost a sector that's providing essential contributions to the region's economic, civic, and educational fabric by creating jobs and improving the quality of life. I have handouts for you all here. I don't know how I get them to you, but they're yours.
Then give them to the clerk right here.
I'll go to you.
And she'll make sure everybody gets them.
These basically include Data Arts, which is a national data organization that reports on the arts and culture section, sector for Southern Arizona and Tucson. It's about budget-side employment, revenue attendance, et cetera. But I want to conclude. So, I mean, really, your support has been critical, and we'd like more. But basically, I want to just talk a minute, 40 seconds, about the Loop Celebration this past weekend. I mean, it was absolutely fantastic. We loved it. And thanks to 200 community members and artists and the support from the city and the county and others for the creation of 40 new works which are on the bike path. And it's there for all of us to enjoy. And we also want to thank the county for supporting us and the maintenance of public art, which is absolutely critical. So, I want to thank you all again. Your funding is greatly appreciated, and thank you.
Thank you very much, Jackie. Appreciate your time. Our next speaker is going to be Steve Diamond. Mr. Diamond, thank you so much for being here with us again. And please give us your name for the record. We appreciate that you come down and you care about stuff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Steve Diamond. I've resided in Pima County since 1971, and I own a small business. Today, I'm here as spokesperson for Indivisible Southern Arizona Justice Alliance. Like thousands of other indivisible chapters, we were founded in the months following the 2016 election with the purpose of resisting the radical legislative agenda of the new administration. I'd like to brag about us for just a moment here.
Please.
We've held more than one demonstration per week since early last year, and we've earned a national reputation. Video clips of our actions air- Video clips of our actions aired on the Rachel Maddow Show seven times in twenty seventeen, and other indivisible chapters look to us for our ability to organize actions and to frame issues. For example, a number of chapters used our sidewalk die-in theme to protest the AHCA last summer. We hold strong progressive egalitarian values. The most important is justice for all, which is why we added Justice Alliance to our name this year, and we began to take a more proactive role in the community. We intend to be here at your meetings and to make our voices heard. Now I want to address item seven on the consent calendar in today's agenda, which is acceptance of a grant to the Sheriff's Department for the High Intensity Drug Trafficking Areas Program. I urge you to remove it from the consent calendar and to hold hearings on the pros and cons. My reasoning will be familiar to you by now. You've heard credible testimony in the context of Operation Stone Garden that the Sheriff's Department's actions in the field are inconsistent with their stated ideals and policies. It's obvious that the department is resistant to oversight from the board despite their paying lip service to the idea of transparency. This should be cause for grave concern on the part of all Pima County residents, and especially on your part as our elected representatives. Why would you want to rubber stamp yet another gift to the Sheriff's Department when they've yet to show proper accountability? Please don't do it without due consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is going to be Eva Romero. Eva, if you'd please come forward and give us your name for the record, and thank you for being here and spending your time with us today.
Thank you. Yes, my name is Eva Romero, and I am here to represent the Arts Foundation for Tucson and Southern Arizona today. I would also like to thank this board for the base allocation that has allowed us to do so much along with the city's base allocation. Uh, we were able to give out a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in grants to large and small arts organizations and artists. Unfortunately, that's less than a third of all the arts organizations in the city or even in the county. Uh, we've been able to pay artists of various kinds to participate in panels and performances. And also, we've been able to sponsor different events, including clovia and ten west. Um, and we are currently managing the public art process for over twenty-four active projects. So today, I'm here to ask you, first of all, to thank you, and then to ask you to think about, please think about, consider, um, increasing this base allocation so that we can do so much more. The return on investment of these funds is great. We have actually been able to do so much with this tiny amount of money. And if you look at other cities that are, that are comparable to our size in terms of Tucson, Nashville, for example, funds its art commission at two point forty-seven million dollars. And Cleveland, which is also a similar population size, has a budget of over sixteen million dollars for the arts. So clearly, uh, you won't be able to raise the base allocation to those numbers in this budget, but that is a goal that we have at the Arts Foundation. We're trying to think creatively about how we can fund the arts to the level that the arts deserve, uh, in this city and this county and Southern Arizona, because we have a true treasure in the vibrancy of arts and culture in our region, and sadly, it's quite underfunded. We have provided some handouts. Jackie brought them today. I hope you'll find them useful. And, um, really, what we would like to stress is that we do everything we can to make this money go as far as possible by having a very rigorous re-granting process, and also by trying to serve artists in all the ways that we can, um, in terms of communicating opportunities here and nationally to them. Let's make this region a creativity leader. We just need to breathe a little oxygen, fan the fire of creativity a little bit more. The arts is not just important because it's pretty or it's decorative, or we can hang it in our living room, uh, but rather because it really is the heart of innovation. And we see that across the board whenever we look at, um, these leading companies like Google or Amazon, et cetera, and these places like Silicon Valley. Yes, STEM is important, but really STEAM is at the heart, where the arts is where people learn how to be creative and really think outside of the box. And we could give so much more to the economy and the fabric of, uh, this area overall if we could partner productively and think creatively also about how we can fund, uh, the arts a little more. So thank you so much for this opportunity and for your support and for your future support as well.
Thank you. Appreciate you being here with us. All right. Uh, our next speaker is going to be Isabel Garcia. Isabel, if you'd please come forward, and thank you for being here today. Appreciate your time, and, uh, if you'd please give us your name for the record.
Good morning. My name is Isabel Garcia. Um, and I'm here, uh, again on the issue of Operation Stone Garden, and I'd like to have a few comments too on the Hyde, uh, um, funds as well. We are here, and, um, Mr. Valades, uh, as indicated, that he was changing his vote because he was going to be action and not words. And so as part of the action, you, uh, requested, uh, certain items. Mr. Christie's only question to Sheriff Napier that day, Napier, was, uh, are you sure you can do it? Are you sure you can do it? Are you sure you can do it? Only concern. And Mr. Valades said, yes, okay, in one week. Uh, where are those responses? Uh, number one. Uh, and where are the responses to, um, uh, the other concerns that the community has pointed out, uh, previously? We've not seen them. We've seen some, uh, responses about, uh, uh, dollar amounts and what jurisdictions have them, whether it's Oro Valley or Tucson Police Department, that they too have no policies and, and way of accountability either, which is really pretty shameful. I want to also comment on the fact that last time, uh, both you and the sheriff indicated over and over and over that this had nothing to do with border enforcement, immigration enforcement, was all border security. Um, you know, you've been in office for a while, and the sheriff should know this too, because these are law enforcement documents, but the Border Patrol, uh, puts out a strategic plan. And it's not a secret. I mean, even states' rights champion Sessions himself in California a week ago or two weeks ago said, "Federal law is superior and supreme." It's amazing from a states' rights guy, right? He doesn't want to, uh, support states' rights anymore. But he made it very clear that we were all to obey the federal law in terms of enforcement, that we were to turn our, how many hundreds of, of police officers, uh, sheriff's deputies do we have? I really don't know. But that we're to turn them as the front line for the Border Patrol, who has thousands and thousands, and that's their intent, and you need to know their intent, and if you don't know it, you should read the Border Patrol Strategic Plan that talks about all of you as stakeholders coming on and accepting their vision, mission, and mode of operation. And law enforcement is number one. That's why they came down, went really hard on Pima County for, uh, stopping this collaboration with, uh, the, uh, uh, federal, and then to receive these federal funding again, high-intensity, um, drug trafficking, really? We should look at high-intensity in the banks, in the arms dealers, in those that are really, really harming us and not the little people, and we should have hearings before any of this gets approved again. And we accept, uh, need answers, Ramon.
Thank you very much, Ms. Garcia. Appreciate you being here. Uh, our next speaker is going to be Mari Ereras. Mari, if you'd please come forward. Appreciate you, uh, being here with us all today, and, um, if you could give us your name for the record, I'd appreciate it.
Putting Mary after Isabel, that's not fair.
It's like following.
Yeah, right, exactly. I appreciate you allowing us to be here. Thank you so much, Chairman Elias and fellow board members, um, and Administrator Huckleberry. I am here to talk about Operation Stone Garden, and I'd like to, uh, enter in, uh, record that letter we sent to, um, uh, Supervisor Valades on February second. Um, and I work, I'm, I'm proudly from the YWCA's Southern Arizona. And frankly, yes, we were very disappointed in your vote, hoped you might reconsider for, and to take another vote, or as Isabel said, to at least give this a, a chance in, in a hearings process as, as it's so important to your constituents. And I'm sure you did hear from more than just us and the ACLU and the other sundry folks that come out and talk about these things. But, um, you know, I know I'm gonna catch up on time here, but bring it up for a revote. Hold Napier accountable if that's what your intention was. It's been three weeks. What's going on? Hold him accountable. Take some action. And, um, and really think about the true safety of your constituents in our communities in Pima County, because frankly, um, it's not the first time I've wondered where you are in this area, but really, they, they need you to, to think about them, and I really thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ereras. Appreciate you being here. Uh, our next speaker is going to be Billy Perd. Billy, thank you for being here as well. Appreciate your time, and if you'd give us your name, uh, for the record, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you. My name is Billy Perd, Staff Attorney.
Is that Mari's pen that she left there too?
I'll bring it back to you, Mari.
Yeah, we'll take it back to her.
My name is Billy Perd, uh, Staff Attorney with the ACLU in, in Arizona and also resident of Pima County, and, um, I would, uh, I'm sure by now you expect that I'm gonna give you some homework, so I'm gonna give you seven copies, including for Mr. Huckleberry and Mr. Fleck.
Somehow I had no doubt, Billy.
As, uh, as Mari mentioned, a month ago today, in fact, this, uh, this board voted to approve the twenty eighteen disbursement of Operation Stone Garden funding on several conditions. I believe there were five conditions, and the most important of which, in my view, it, I'd like to talk about today for my three minutes, the most important of which is the requirement that the Pima County Sheriff's Office develop written standards and policies, rules and regulations, uh, for their interactions with Border Patrol, their interactions with ICE, and their conduct of immigration-related enforcement to the extent the, the state law permits them to do so. Um, I am, I did review an early draft, and to be fair to the Pima County Sheriff's Office, it was marked as early draft or something to that effect, uh, but I am in receipt of an early draft that was, I think, put together around, uh, February eighth. And I want to alert this body that in our view, uh, it is now, again, to be fair, it's an early draft and marked as such, but it is wholly inadequate. Uh, it is wholly inadequate. It appears to be, um, basically a copy and paste effort from the current SB ten seventy, uh, legal language, um, without going into, into deeper detail. Any policy in our view ought to be specific, as outlined in my letter that's just been passed out. Um, I had, I have seven or eight specific areas and topics that in my, in our view, a policy must include, uh, and must make clear to the average deputy, there are five hundred deputies, and I'm sure even, um, although I met loggerheads many times with the union, the police union, I'm sure the police union would agree with me that they would like to have a policy that clearly articulates what is permissible and what is prohibited, so the average deputy knows that. Um, the area of immigration law is extremely complex. Um, we should not be expecting our deputies to know every nuance of, of federal immigration law. Uh, we should make a policy that's simple, straightforward, and very specific. And I should add, as pointed out in my letter, that, um, at the moment, the Pima County Sheriff's Office is out in the wilderness on this issue, so to speak. It is the largest, I believe, the largest local law enforcement agency in the state to lack, completely lack, any written policies related to immigration and interaction with Border Patrol ICE. Let's make it a good policy, and let it, let's continue our insistence that any Stone Garden money be conditioned on a solid, specific policy with rubrics, metrics, et cetera. Um, and I also, because today the Hyde of Grant, the High Intensity Drug Trafficking Grant is on the table, I would encourage this body to not approve such funding until the Sheriff's Office can demonstrate its ability to promulgate effective immigration-related policies. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perd. We appreciate you being here, spending your time with us. Brother David, uh, please come forward. Thank you for spending your time here with us, and, and, uh, it's nice to see you. If you'd please give us your name for the record, sir.
My name is Brother David Bure. I'm a Franciscan friar. I have lived eleven, the last thirteen years here in Pima County. Currently, I live in El Frida, but I'm here on a, on the issue that was, that was just discussed of great concern for us, uh, working along the border. Uh, for my eleven years here, working here in Pima County, I basically worked with people who are the outcast of society. And so my focus today is the people who are living in fear. The question, can they go to the police if something happens to them? They're trying to raise their families. And so these are people of great concern, and I think this, this situation of, of accepting the money, the federal money that might bond you in, in, uh, in a way that you're not ready to, to be bound to the, uh, immigration authorities. The more that you can't, the people living without papers cannot trust the police, the more they'll be living with crime and, and, and not, and be suffering a little bit more. And so they, these are human beings. I think that's my point today, they're human beings. Uh, this is, uh, Pima County's been a light in helping and understanding that we have people living from both sides of the border, living here. And, um, if they cannot, if they cannot trust the police anymore, this can be a tremendous thing, a tremendous, uh, situation for them to try to live with. Uh, we think of the Docket people, how innocent they really are, and there's, you know, on a national level, we're trying to deal with that, uh, the country's trying to deal with that. And so we have some innocent people trying to live and suffering very much, and this movement toward collaborating more strongly will put more fear into the community. In, in, uh, Douglas, we have a legal clinic we just started for people who are trying to get their papers worked out. And I'll just tell you one situation, because how complicated it is on the human level. We have a young couple that are obviously in love, they want to get their life together. She's, she's a, uh, US citizen. His mom was, his mom was a US citizen, but because of a family problem in Agua Prieta she went across when she was pregnant, and, and he was born, and, and on the other side in Agua Prieta. Now he's got all kinds of difficulties just trying to get that all straightened out, and we're trying to, trying to assist him. So I, this is, this is the, the human drama that's taking place right now, and so your vote is very important. And so my hope and prayer would be that you can put a stop to this for right now and study it more fully and see what the consequences really are, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Brother David. Appreciate you being here. Coming up all the way from El Frida, you know? Did you bring us some of that good chili powder they grow over there? Thank you, sir. Uh, our next, uh, person to speak is going to be Ryan Kelly. Mr. Kelly, thank you for being here, spending your time with us. Please give us your name for the record.
Thanks, and I'll actually try to be brief this time because I went way over last time. Thanks for putting up with me. Um, my name is Ryan Kelly. I'm actually a constituent of Alley's in District One. Uh, so I'm here to kind of echo some of the sentiments, uh, from my colleague Steve, and some of the things that we've heard from Mari, the YWCA, and Billy with ACLU. And, uh, um, it's my thought that approving or denying federal grants is a really important part of what you, our supervisors, do. Um, it's important oversight, um, that to echo, uh, the pastor's words this morning, uh, can be used for good. Um, I'm unaware of any developments or updates from Sheriff Napier and his agreeing to meet the new stipulations for Stone Garden funding. Uh, two weeks ago, actually, Supervisor Elias said right here that he had not received any word from the sheriff on the progress made. And that tells me that the powers that be, all of you, uh, may not be taking this seriously. And yet here we are again today approving yet another federal grant for our Sheriff's Department, uh, and as part of our consent calendar nonetheless. Um, that's a procedural equivalent of, oh, it's that time of year again to approve this money without much thought. Isn't that what got us here? How are we approving any federal grant for the Sheriff's Department without these oversights agreed to from the prior, uh, issues we've had with Stone Garden? Uh, times have changed. This is unacceptable. And, uh, I think that maybe we need to pump the brakes before we consent. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kelly. Appreciate you being here. Um, our last speaker is Leon Woodward. Mr. Woodward? Mr. Woodward?
It's concerning Staples. I think I put the wrong number down.
I think we need to have you speak a call to the audience, but you could address that item while you're here, sir.
I can address that.
Yes, please do. Thank you. Appreciate you spending your time here and I know it's difficult sometimes, but if you could give us your name for the record, please, also.
Well, this is concerning Mr. Staples. My name is Leon Woodward and my family and I own the corner of Alameda and Scott. We've owned it for many years and we're one of the 42 people who were sued by Mr. Staples the day after Thanksgiving. Been a good steward of the land. It's a beautiful property. It was a piece of garbage when I bought it and I tore it down. I spent hundreds of thousands of dollars fixing it up and the county has made over a half a million dollars from me just on the property tax. And this is insane, absolutely insane for Staples to be doing this to us and he needs to be denied this $50,000. Look what he's done to Raytheon. Been in court for, what, 10 years with Raytheon? What does he have to show? Where's the profit and loss that he's making off of these lawsuits, these frivolous lawsuits that he's finding? The way you stop him is stop funding him. And he needs, he needs to realize we're humans. We all have issues at our homes, we all have things that we have to deal with and to have to put up with this nonsense is ridiculous and there's nothing to show for it. If you were to ask him to produce a profit and loss concerning these 42 lawsuits, how much money have you brought in? How about 10 years ago against Raytheon? The income versus the money spent for appraisals and attorney fees? I'll bet you it's nothing but a losing proposition for the county to allow this guy to continue. The way to stop him is to stop the funding. And this man is very dangerous. Can't go on this way. And, you know, I just don't like what's happening. And it appears to me, after I've looked at several of the cases, he's only primarily going after the people who are collectible. Think you know what I mean? Raytheon is collectible, I'm collectible. There's a few other people that I know have been sued, they're collectible. He's not suing the people necessarily that have a $75,000 property, going after the people that have properties worth millions and millions. He wants to go after these people. He's targeting us. That's not fair. That's unconstitutional to pick on one. What isn't he just put all the names in a barrel and pick them out? No, he has to find out who's rich and who's poor and let's go after the rich people. They are collectible and that's what he's doing. And it's not fair. For me, I guess you know it's not fair. I don't feel well, I'm very ill. And I shouldn't have to be putting up with his stuff. The money that we're gonna have to probably pay in more taxes, that should go to my, to my two daughters and my wife. The county has made right out of half a million from us and we're gonna, as long as we own the property, we're gonna continue to pay property taxes. But to target us, to target us, that's unconstitutional, ladies and gentlemen. That's not the way you run government. Where is the profit and loss statement? How much money has he brought in and how much has he spent? We need to look at that. That's a very serious item. I think he's overspending. I don't think the money's gonna be coming in.
Mr. Woodward, you've exceeded your time. Could you please finish up?
That's it. Please, please deny him the $50,000. Every time he comes to you, please deny it. That's the only way he can be defeated. All right? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it. That concludes a call to the public. We're on to consent calendar. Chairman, Supervisor Valadez.
Ms. Chairman, based in large part of the fact that we had a certain number of requests from the Sheriff's Department, I think at this point, what I'd like to do is move that we table item 7 on the consent calendar until such a time as the five conditions are met.
Second, yeah. Got it.
And what five conditions, as outlined in this letter?
As outlined in the original motion.
Okay.
Okay, that's fine. All right. Any discussion? Hearing done, roll call.
Supervisor Bronson?
Aye.
Supervisor Christie?
No.
Supervisor Miller?
No.
Supervisor Valadez?
Aye.
Chairman Elias?
Aye. Motion carries, 3 to 2. What's the board's pleasure on the remainder of consent?
Mr. Chairman, if nobody refuses to divide the question, I'll move the remaining items on consent.
Second. A motion and second to approve the remainder of consent. Discussion, objections, hearing done, motion carries. Thank you. We're on to item 8, County Administrator Colossal Cave Cooperative Management, Operation, and Development Agreement for the Operation of Show Cave and Other Facilities.
I'll move the item.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Miller, please.
I object to this because there was a reason that we have audits on these properties because of the problems that we've had in the past and I think waiving it is just opening ourselves up to more problems. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Any objections?
I object.
One objection noted for Supervisor Miller. Motion carries, 4 to 1. We're on to item 9, Assessor Unfinished Business Contract for Helm, Leesay, and Worthington LTD.
Move to deny.
Second.
I have a motion to deny item 9.
Mr. Chairman, question, procedurally, shouldn't this have gone through the County Administrator first? It came directly to the board. I'm a little confused about process.
Mr. Huckleberry?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I think this item obviously comes from the oral discussion that the board had with the assessor at a couple of meetings ago. He did provide some information that related to this matter, pretty sketchy at best. It was kind of a summary of the case and then a whole series of pleadings that had been made in the case. And obviously, this is coming on the heels of the other 42, 45 cases, depending on how you count them. And this is an extension or adding additional funds to outside counsel that is representing the assessor in a completely separate case, which is the Elcon case, dealing with the tax year of 2015. And it's one of the things that obviously, as I looked at it, and I've looked at all of it now, I'd recommend that the board approve this amendment as you obviously have concerns over his other activities. In reading this particular case, it's on Elcon and in 2015, there were appeals, property taxes in 14 and 15, some preliminary rulings of the Arizona Tax Court in 14, you know, basically ruled in the favor of the petitioner. The 14 and 15 cases were consolidated. Then the petitioner has taken and tried to move because the tax court did say, at least in his initial ruling, that the assessor could raise the value above what had been given by the State Board of Equalization. The petitioner then went to the Court of Appeals. Court of Appeals denied and the petitioner is now gone for special action with the Arizona Supreme Court and that was all of the materials that you received. And in this case, the assessor is the respondent or the defendant in the action. It's all been briefed and so I don't think there's a great deal of additional expense. And I do believe that if the board were to deny the amendment, that it's likely that further litigation would ensue and it'd be likely that we may not prevail in providing payment to the assessor counsel in this case. So in this very limited arrangement, I'm going to recommend that the board approve this amendment. And I think we'll find out fairly quickly whether the Supreme Court accepts review. If they do, then, you know, the cost of the prep has already been done. If they don't, we're right back at the tax court to find out what the tax court will actually do with 2015 values, what has occurred since 2015. And I think there was a little bit of, you had to read between the lines in the one page that the assessor sent over, talked about taxes at risk of $784,000. Well, county's only about 25% of that $784,000, except we cover the expenses for all the other taxing jurisdictions in these matters and that it would quote "roll over." Well, that assumes that these values haven't been changing since 2015. They have, '16, '17, '18, and '19, they're all going up. What's been affected is the 5% cap on the limited value, which is the taxable value. So the assessor, if he's successful, if he can change the base limited value in 2015, it would be positive. And I think that's really what you need to let play out in the tax court. So reluctantly, I've already looked at it, looked at it in great detail, looked at it more than I'd ever want to, but I would recommend that you approve this amendment for this specific case.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Huckleberry, but procedurally, my question was, should this request not have come directly to you and then to the board?
Mr. Chairman and Supervisor Bronson, we also have gotten a response from the assessor, some questions raised by Supervisor Valadez. And that would tend to indicate, and let me answer this, probably not in this case because it would already been a previously approved by the county attorney and probably the county attorney for hiring outside counsel because initially this was, I think, in our area of finance. And so given the fact that outside counsel was approved for the assessor probably way back in 2015, this amendment would not necessarily have come to me for approval. And so that's why I think it's on your agenda. The material that the assessor has now provided in response to a memorandum from Supervisor Valadez would tend to indicate that, and you remember, we had the discussion about hiring private counsel with personal funds and that had occurred. There's been a couple of memorandums about representation and the assessor attached a memorandum from Mr. Fleg dated February 1st of this year regarding not representing the assessor in certain cases going forward, but not applying that retroactively to these 40-some cases that have been filed. And then the assessor had one sentence in this response and said, "I don't intend to hire private counsel again." So I assume that if we look forward, 2018, that the assessor will follow the proper procedure and policy adopted by the board for hiring outside counsel, which means he goes to the county attorney to determine if there's true conflict and the county attorney can make the opinion. And if the county attorney doesn't, the assessor can always come based on the policy to the county administrator. I don't recall the assessor ever coming to my office to hire outside counsel in the past.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Miller?
I sent Mr. Staples via the clerk of the board and copied all the board members a memo back in February. I asked for the amount of legal fees to law firms representing the assessor's office, how much they have paid out. I asked about the number of cases that were brought forward, how many were won, how many were lost. And I also asked about the total amount of monies paid out. I have yet to receive a response to that. I don't know if anyone else has. Mr. Huckleberry, if that information has come back through you? We got a email with a voluminous amount of information that you start looking through it, you can't make heads or tails of it. It does not answer my questions. And I understand the assessor, you know, is a separately and independently elected office, but end of the day, he has a budget to live within that we approve every year. And are we going outside and above and beyond his budget by approving these monies?
Actually, Mr. Staples has come in under budget every year he's been in office.
Okay. Will he be coming in under budget this year?
I don't know, but I'm just saying, if there's any correlation to it, that's something to consider.
Right. And I understand that, but end of the day, we don't know where he's gonna come in this year and are these within his, I mean, are we approving above and beyond? And that's a question and I did not get an answer to my question, so I can't answer that.
Thank you Supervisor. Supervisor Christie?
I just want to briefly touch on one of the cases that he's in current litigation with and it's known as the Sitterly case. And a quick, brief background is the assessor Staples valued the Sitterly property at $683,000. Mr. Sitterly appealed and being a Class IV property, it became the Pima County Department of Finance's responsibility to defend the valuation appeal, not the county assessor's office. The county assessor then asked Mr. Sitterly to be included along with Mr. Sitterly as a named defendant. Mr. Sitterly asked the court to remove the assessor as a named defendant with Sitterly and the assessor objected to being removed. Now, Pima County Finance appraised the Sitterly property at $500,000 after it was appraised by the assessor at $683,000. Mr. Sitterly offered a settlement amount to Pima County Finance for the amount of $571,400, which Pima County Finance approved. The assessor, who is still named as a defendant along with Sitterly, refused to accept Finance Department's offer and therefore Mr. Sitterly's. So the questions I have is, why did the assessor wish to be included as a defendant along with Mr. Sitterly?
Point of order, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with you Supervisor Miller. This isn't relevant to the item that we are considering right now. I was letting you go on because I was giving you a chance to make it relevant and I don't see that. So please, Mr. Christie, if you'd give us what you're thinking of, please.
Yes, and the relevance to why I'm asking about it is because he has engaged outside counsel to represent him in this case. That's the relevance I was trying to connect here. And basically, what is the settlement status of the case? What point in dollar amount will he settle?
I don't think any of that is relevant to it, but I understand what you're saying about hiring outside counsel and the procedure that goes along with that.
But this is an exact correlation as to why he's asking for outside counsel to do something on this case that really makes no sense for him to do it. That's my point.
Supervisor Bronson?
I can understand Supervisor your frustration Supervisor Christie, but it's not germane to the item on the agenda. However, I would encourage you to ask those questions either of the county administrator or the assessor directly and see if we can't get some answers. And then perhaps at our next board meeting, you could appropriately place it on the agenda for discussion if you wish to.
I understand what you're saying Supervisor Bronson and I kind of agree with you. You can definitely ask those questions of the assessor and I think they're relevant, but on this particular item, I don't know that it has proper place. Supervisor Valadez, please.
Madam Chair, or Madam Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. I apologize. It was four years. I'm gonna come in drag one of these days, watch everybody jump. I apologize, Mr. Chairman.
Sorry, no problem. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Huckleberry, let me ask you a blunt question. What happens if we deny this funding?
That was all right, it's cool. Thank you.
Mr. Huckleberry?
Yes, Mr. Chairman and Supervisor Valadez. My guess is that Mr. Staples will go to the court and ask that he be compelled the board to approve the amendment and more than likely, in the current state, that would be successful.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Fleg, is the county attorney's office conflicted on this issue in terms of giving us legal advice?
Counsel.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Valadez, yes, and we determined this was an appropriate, legitimate use of outside counsel.
All right. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Huckleberry, you made a whole, a little bit of a discussion in terms of the issue being, I believe, a full cash value and yet we're taxed on the limited cash value of properties. So what are we arguing about?
Mr. Chairman and Supervisor Valdez, as little and as much as I can tell from just the pleadings, it's trying to raise the base limited value in 2015 to above a number that represents about $42 million. And you remember, there was a sale in that period of the same property for about $82 million. However, there are very complex rules about shopping center valuations and et cetera, and so very often, even the sales that are real market sales don't enter into the valuation equations.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Huckleberry, I wrote an memo to you asking some specific questions, and I know that, thank you to the assessor publicly for responding to them, but I didn't find that it was kind of as thorough as I had hoped some of the responses were going to be. So, regardless of what the outcome is of this vote, I certainly would offer direction to you and staff to pursue a little better clarity and a little better answers than what we've received thus far from said email or from said memo, particularly where it is an analysis. I mean, you talked about the fact that we've got that one lawsuit that's about $784,000, and when you do the math, I think we get less than $200,000, but we're flipping the whole bill for the legal expense. So, I wasn't really satisfied, particularly when I asked a question about the cost-benefit analysis to the county, because, and I can understand that it hasn't been done, but I think we need to look at that. And I was very specific in that I wanted to make a decision based on facts, and
We don't have them.
I don't really have them. The only fact I have is that clearly you believe that if we take a negative action on this item, we're going to lose that case in court. So, we're stuck in a really odd place where we're arguing about full cash value. It doesn't really mean that much. We're flipping a bill for very limited return, and we don't have very clear answers on anything yet.
Mr., do you want to respond?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman and Supervisor Valdez, you know, I generally agree. Again, I'm trying to separate this case from all the other cases. And the limited material we did receive from the assessor, and I know that Supervisor Miller asked for costs and what's been incurred, he did provide a list of those 43, 45 different cases, and three columns, which are fairly important, which is full cash value, the limited value, and the State Board of Equalization. And I sent that material on to the board with a cover memorandum. It said, in about 25 of those cases, it was clear that what the assessor was appealing was a State Board of Equalization value that had gone below the limited value. In those cases, the assessor may have a point. But in the other 20-some, there was a fairly large range still between limited value and full cash value, which meant that regardless of litigation, the 5% rule is still going to bring up the limited value and the taxable receipts of the county. Therefore, maybe that litigation appears to be not warranted without further explanation from the assessor. So, that's why I say it kind of goes both ways, depending on what you look at and how much information you get.
Mr. Chairman, what-
Supervisor Bronson?
Yeah, I, we received this morning, and I'm going through it, a communication, an email from Brian Johnson regarding this. And he is saying, he's indicating essentially that there are two falsehoods in the assessor's case for the El Con Mall for 2014 tax year, that the replat and parcel split combo occurred, numbers, parcel numbers assigned and values assigned in January of 2014, when in fact it occurred September through December of 2013. Yeah, I don't know. I'm going to withdraw my motion and ask that this be continued because I'd like some answers from the assessor as to the assertions in this email that was sent to the clerk of the board on Sunday, March 18th, which we received yesterday. But I-
If that's a motion, I'll second it.
Well, I withdrew my motion if you acknowledged that. Yeah, okay. We continue it till our next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. That's a motion.
Discussion, objections?
Hearing none, motion carries. We're on to items 10 and 11. I'll move those items.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve items 10 and 11. Discussion, objections, hearing none, motion carries. We're on to items 12, 13, and the clerk notes indicates that item 17 needs to be considered along with these two items.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move all three items.
You're going to move all three items. Thank you Supervisor Bronson. I'll second.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Miller, please.
I'm, I, in looking at these, Pima County taxpayers are also funding the tenant improvements on these. And I'd like to know when we became a lending institution to start funding tenant improvements, and wonder why the tenants, specifically the University of Arizona, aren't funding their own tenant improvements as is normal. And when taxpayers are asked to pay for, or to hold on, "We can't fix the roads. We can't do this. We're mortgaging our buildings to the tune of $25 million per the budget," and they're asked to wait in line, wait another 20 years for your roads to get fixed. And it's time to stop this. And I can't support any of this because of the fact that, you know, the taxpayers are asked, "You've got to hold on while we continue funding these things." And specifically, on the courthouse, 67% of the voters said no. And that was in 2015. And times have changed, and people, you heard the lady here earlier, they're talking about safety needs. We've all heard Maslow's hierarchy of needs, and one of the big things in there is being able to be safe and feel safe and drive on safe roads. And when you have situations like we do with our roads, and we're funding this, and where the tenants aren't even asked to make their own improvements, and I'll note, the Visitors Bureau gets a lot of money from Pima County. They're budgeted about $10 million from all the various jurisdictions. They can afford their own tenant improvements at a minimum. And there's all kinds of money pouring in from everywhere. That's what I keep hearing. Oh, there's people with money coming in, coming in. But we never see it. And that's my objection to this. Thank you.
I would just comment Supervisor Miller, that, you know, this is probably one of the most important pieces of real estate in downtown Tucson. It's definitely, in my humble estimation, the second most beautiful building in all of Pima County, the first being San Javier. But I think it's incumbent on us to take care of this parcel and make sure that it's put to useful work. And I think it's incredibly important that we retain control over what happens inside the courthouse, because it is such an important historical building for us all. It's absolutely critical to the success of economics in the downtown region as well. There are serious proposals being put on the table about road repair right now that are going to be considered by this board in the next month. So, I think that, basically, I understand your concerns, but I think you're wrong-minded. Supervisor Valdez?
Mr. Chairman, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Huckleberry. Are the tenant improvements amortized in the lease?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman and Supervisor Valdez and the balance of the board, the answer is, they're not only amortized, they're paid for upfront. In the case of the Visitor Center's lease, there's a clause in there that says they'll directly reimburse upon construction of $975,000 of tenant improvements. And so, that's a direct reimbursement. And if you think of their lease, their lease is $20 a square foot.
Right.
We have a market appraisal that the net gross rentable square foot cost in that building is $20.64.
So, they are paying market-
So, we have a nonprofit entity paying market rent and paying for the tenant improvements. Goes to the university. Let's talk about the university. The university will pay all of their tenant improvements. They'll pay anything over $4 million. The reason for the $4 million is that they have donations that are online that will come into play within the three years they pay that back, and they will pay at an interest rate, the same interest rate that we're paying for the COPS that are very short-term. These are very short-term COPS we're using for this product. So, they're paying the full cost of their tenant improvements. They are paying the market rate on the, what we call laboratory space and other space, market rate on the storage space. The museum space is basically provided at no cost. But we provide no-cost leases to the Desert Museum, the Air and Space Museum. So, there's a very significant track record of this board on museum activities that are public interest that pay no fee or no rent. When you talk about repairing roads, you're going to have those options before you on April 3rd and probably later that month to actually make a real investment in transportation repair. You could take the entire gap that we have in the, what we call the cap between our rate limit and where our rate is now in the primary, and raise it, and you could generate about $50 million a year if you want to repair the roads with general funds. But I think that is a complete distortion of taxation, because historically, road repairs have always been paid for by user fees. And the fact that we're in the position we're in is because there's not been any courage to increase user fees for transportation in the last 30 years. And so, it's forcing the smaller jurisdictions and the counties and the cities and the towns to all go toward excise tax options and financing transportation, not property taxes.
Right. Just for clarification, before we continue, for clarification, when Mr. Huckleberry was referring to COPS, he was referring to certificates of participation as opposed to our police force.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, you're done?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, any other comments? If not, I'll call the question. Roll call.
Supervisor Bronson?
Aye.
Supervisor Christie?
Yes.
Supervisor Miller?
No.
Supervisor Valdez?
Aye.
Chairman Elias?
Aye. Motion carries, board one, on items 12, 13, and 17. We're on to item 14, including Resolution 2018-16.
A motion in a second. I'm a little taken aback by this item, frankly. We've been now. We've been asked to increase rates on residents here related to sewer bills at several meetings in the past year, and all of a sudden, we have a lot of money in reserves that can be used for this. And we've heard nothing but pleadings of poverty from our wastewater division. And so, I'm concerned about that. And Mr. Huckleberry, maybe you could shed some light on this for the public and for my own purposes as well.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I think you need to, the item that has been before the board recently is an equity issue. It's only dealing with-
We understand that.
-with the equity. And I think we said, even I said that, when we were discussing it. It's not a revenue issue. It's an equity issue.
Right, but certainly the requests that came before that were requests for money.
Three years ago, yes.
Yeah. There was that other one in there, too.
You've got to remember, we have not had a rate increase for some time. We've also said that as we have generated the revenues available to the utility, that we are segregating excess revenues to prepaid debt. And as we do that, that takes all the pressure off of the system to raise rates into the future. And I think that's why I communicated with you just recently. And because we, in exploring with the attorneys whether or not we could take cash, set it aside in an account, and use that as the ratios, and so I think there's the key, is that we got a legal analysis that said we could create these separate escrow accounts and use those in creating the 1.25 ratio that's required to keep the utility solvent from a creditor's perspective on outstanding debt, revenue versus expenses. So, once we got that approval, what that does is says that that excess cash can be segregated, used to put into accounts to prepaid debt, and count as a revenue source against the expense ratios that retain our creditor rating. So, that's really all we've done.
And our DCR remains at 1.25 with this item.
It's that or above, yes. And, you know, the cash that's come into this utility, I think, is such that right now, just on the basis of the ability to prepay this debt and set it aside, again, all of our debt's been reduced, and it's always limited to 15 years, so it's going away fairly quickly anyway, that you probably will not ever see another rate increase. Now, we've said to be conservatively, five to seven years, and that assumes no catastrophic failures in the system. That's important to know.
They've happened in District 5, everybody, so.
And it's true. And if you recall, after that, we set aside-
You did.
-restricted cash accounts.
Exactly.
And this is not even touching the restricted cash accounts. They're still there for catastrophic failures.
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Miller?
I had a couple of questions. Mr. Huckleberry, you were talking about the, you asked about having this excess cash segregated and authorized to be used for payback. Who authorized us to pay this back? Who allowed us to segregate it? Or did I miss, I thought, I heard you just say that we found out recently that-
Yeah. Mr. Chairman and Supervisor Miller, we segregated the cash. The question is, is could we in fact use that segregated cash in an escrow account to count against the revenue and expense ratios that we need to maintain for our credit ratings?
And is, okay, all right. Is this, so we're able to maintain those by paying this off? Why didn't we know that before? I think, getting back to Supervisor Elias's question, that as we got this excess cash buildup, did we not know that we were going to have this situation? And we have the restricted cash to ensure that we keep our ratio up, and I assume they'll be keeping that steady in the event of some sort of catastrophic issue with the wastewater system and for ongoing maintenance of it, right?
Mr. Burke, I think you want to answer that question. Were you done Supervisor Miller?
No, I had, I just wanted to finish that, is that are we going to be actually decreasing our rates because a huge percentage of the rate right now, a big chunk of it, is going to fund the payment for these bond, for the debt service for the bonds? So, at what point are, we should be maybe potentially looking at a decrease at some point versus holding it the same?
Mr. Chairman, let me try and answer quickly, and then I'll let Mr. Burke add some detail.
Okay.
It's only as our finance director began exploring this option in about the last 18 months that this option's become available. The second answer is that we know that there's steady-state obligations with regard to major capital repair of the interceptor system that needs to continue on an ongoing basis, probably at about $30 to $40 million a year. And that system is being repaired as well. Yes, there will come a time in the future when we will probably be talking about rate reductions. But I think our view is that let's not talk about rate reductions, let's talk about stabilization, paying off the debt. Clearly, in five to 10 years, that debt is going to be gone, and it's probably very likely that we'll be looking at rate reductions or converting and creating a capital accumulation fund for pay-as-you-go, which means that as these, as you, you know, we've said previously how much capacity we have in the system. Probably, there's no major new capacity obligations coming in the next 10 to probably 20 years. But the issue is, is do we then begin to shift as we pay off all the debt to pay-as-you-go capital financing, which means we need to then figure out what we need to accumulate on an annual basis to replenish, replace, or expand the treatment facilities 20 years from now.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Burke, please.
Mr. Chairman and Supervisor Miller, the reason this is a new approach- Mr. Chairman and Supervisor Miller, the reason this is a new approach to handling the paying of debt is, the primary approach to use when you have excess cash is to prepay your debt. The bonds and the sewer revenue obligations that have been issued in the past years, we have prepaid all of those that we're able to prepaid at this time. Investors always want a period of time between seven and ten years that you cannot prepay. We brought back all the debt that we were allowed to buy back at this time, and this approach is, we put money aside in an escrow account that will pay the debt when it can be prepaid. But because we've already put the money aside, the debt is no longer considered debt for us by the auditor general for our book. So this is a prepayment of a prepayment, so to speak. And we didn't need to do that before, but now that we've prepaid all debt, we're allowed to do it at this time, we're using a new approach to set aside cash so it's there when the debt can be prepaid.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. We're on to items fifteen and sixteen. Chair, remove those two items.
Second.
I'd like to say thank you to Shirley Estes and to the Margaret E. Mooney Foundation. These are hundred thousand dollar donations for the completion of the Tucson January eighth memorial. Those are generous gifts, and this action will allow the county to receive those generous donations. Any objections?
I'm going to object.
One objection for Supervisor Miller. So sixteen and fifteen carry four to one. We're on to items eighteen, franchises, licenses, and permits. Items eighteen, nineteen.
Mr. Chairman, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address us? These are hearings. If not, I move to close the hearings and approve the items, noting that there's a sheriff's report on nineteen.
Thank you Supervisor Bronson. We have motion to close public hearing and approve items eighteen and nineteenth in recognition of the clerks.
No, second, yes.
Oh, there was no second?
No.
I'll second.
I was going to do, but okay, I guess Supervisor Miller, thank you for catching that, and all of you. So we have a motion and a second now. Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. We're on to item twenty. This is a hearing, rezoning, case number P one seven R Z zero 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 nine, Vander Hayden et al. And is there anybody here to speak in opposition to the item? Since there's nobody here in opposition to the item, I'm going to go ahead and move that we close public hearing and approve this item subject to standard and special conditions.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion, objections, hearing none, motion carries. We're on to item twenty-one. This item does require a supermajority, and I do have four speaker cards here. So we're going to go ahead and hear the speakers first, or would you like to hear staff report?
I think we should hear the speakers.
Speakers first, very well. Our first speaker's going to be David Haymore. Mr. Haymore, thank you for being here today, spending your time with us. I know it's difficult to wait for your item to come up. It's natural instinct to get kind of antsy, but please give us your name for the record, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman and Supervisors of the Board, my name is David Haymore. And if we can get that to light up here...
I apologize for getting your name on...
My wife and I bought this nine point five acre parcel in two thousand sixteen, which was originally a nine point nine acre parcel, but in nineteen fifty-eight, thirty feet of the north border was ceded to Pima County for Sunkist Road. And because it was historically large enough for three SR lots, we hoped it would be possible to regain what was lost so that we could build three houses for three families that would love to be neighbors. We are David and Barbara Haymore, Bruce and Michelle Haymore, and then our son Andrew Haymore.
That's a family.
Yes, thank you. We are not developers nor house flippers. Our first idea was to check with the county, since the road isn't maintained, we hoped that they would cede that thirty feet back, but they explained that that could not be done because it would create a jog in the road. We pursued other ideas, including trying to buy the missing point four acres from nearby neighbors that had extra land. They declined to do so because of two concerns, that their mortgage holders would object, and the purchases of slivers of land would create oddly shaped parcels. We pursued a variance on the advice of the staff, and that turned out to be the wrong direction. Later, we found the right process, which was zoning to SR two, which has several benefits. The parcel is only slightly smaller than SR. Looking at a map, the difference is noticeable, but only slightly so, and there's no way that you can see any difference on the ground. It is eighty-seven percent of full size. There is one more detail about the property that I would like to point out with this diagram that is different from all others. There is an easement that runs through it. If you study a wider GIS map, you'll find nearly two hundred SR lots around us, many of them have direct access to roads, others using...
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Miller?
I had a question for you. Could you point out which lot you're talking about? Is it number two?
There's two full SR lots, and the slightly undersized one is number three.
Thank you.
And it's eighty-seven percent of the full size.
Anyway, of nearly two hundred lots in the area, these easements always run along a property line, and the reason for that is so that the property owner can have full use of their lot. And there is only one, this one, that doesn't. If only two SR lots are allowed on this property, your choices of division leave you with either two weirdly asymmetrical lots, one of which would be the largest SR lot in the area, or dividing it the other way, you would have cars driving through your yard, and you would be marooned from a good portion of your property. We've done everything in our power to make this three point three acres. I believe that two point nine acres is a reasonable solution. I believe that it does no harm to our neighbors, it blocks no one's view, and it is a unique lot, and that doing so would restore the original intent. I appreciate your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other questions for the gentleman? Not, we'll go to our next speaker, Kevin Hartman. Mr. Hartman, if you'd come forward, thank you for being patient today, appreciate it, and give us your name for the record, please.
My name is Kevin Hartman. I live down that same easement on the property. I'm not objecting to them wanting to build three homes on that property, I'm objecting to the zoning change itself and the long-term implications it has. Staff is recommending it because it's close to the square footage that's required of an SR. This actually shows all the other properties that would qualify under the staff recommendations. So these, each lot that is marked here can also add an additional lot to that square footage, or to this square footage. So with that said, now these all become SR two lots, and you have a series of SR two lots in here now. It's not hard to extrapolate that all the lots could be split into SR two. So every SR lot one can actually be split at that point and become an SR two lot. So he has an SR two lot, they're going to say, with conditions. It won't take long for the conditions just to fade away, and everybody's referring to them as SR two lots, and this just starts going down the line. I'd kind of want a yes or no answer from staff. They're indicating that this is the way it should be done, so they're wanting all the neighbors to participate. I want staff to tell me that no, there is no other way this could be done, that a variance is not an option, or there is no other options.
Okay, I understand that, Mr. Hartman.
The consultants, they kind of gave us a little offer of a chip and seal easement. I'm not sure if anybody knows what a chip and seal easement looks like after a year of traffic. There is no road agreement. So when this thing starts to fail, how are we going to maintain it? Who's going to maintain it? Who's going to watch it? And who's going to pay for it? It's coming up with a little fight item later down the road. The easement was set up for our three homes, now we're adding a fourth home onto our easement. I'm not sure actually if that fourth lot would have legal access, and if it does, then we really need to get a road agreement in how we're going to maintain it.
Okay. Any other questions?
Nope, that's it.
Okay, stay there at the podium. Chris, you want to help me out?
Mr. Chairman, in response to his question, theoretically, they could seek a variance to get a similar outcome. Our concern with a variance route is that this is a very orchestrated planned lot division. The applicant then would have a, and the board of adjustment would have a hard time approving a variance when it's such an orchestrated, self-imposed hardship. So in theory, they could have pursued the variance, but when you look at the whole picture, you look at our code and sort of the two different paths you could take, we would argue this is the correct path.
And as to the, I mean, from what I understand, conditions remain in place, you know, in perpetuity, and they're perfectly defensible and admissible in court, and so, any comments you want to make about that, too, Chris?
Mr. Chairman, you do bring up a good point in that. The rezoning process does give us the ability to clearly articulate and impose a series of rezoning conditions specific to this request that are, I would say, arguably more clear, transparent, and easily, more easily to enforce than an outcome of a variance. That's correct.
Right. Is there any of those conditions, just...
We have the correct...
That particular concern that the gentleman has brought up today?
I would say the number one condition that is in place is limiting them to what's depicted. So this isn't, they are requesting an SR two lot, but the lot size is much more closer to the SR category. It's just under three acres when they're done. So the neighbors are correct, when you look at a planning map, and you're only looking at land use designations and you see SR two, you'll see it, but if then you look at this case, you'll see that it's very nuanced. And it's, both the commission and staff are recommending approval because it's so close to the SR category. If somebody else down the street were to come in and just go for SR two, I'm not so sure this would offer anybody any precedent. It's a different request altogether.
Okay. And then the issue of the easement, how is that dealt with specifically so that we have it on the table here?
Mr. Chairman, I'm not clear on the easement.
No, there's a fourth person now that's involved in the easement, right?
Correct.
The road easement.
It was an easement dedicated to the three lots that are beyond that, and its purpose is for that.
No, I think it just is going to stay on that particular lot for those three units. That's my understanding of it.
Well, he'll be driving on it, and their, and staff has recommended chipping sealing it because of the extra dust that the extra driver's going to create, and now we have an issue.
It's a private road. You have one too, probably.
That's my road.
Right.
So I'm, who's going to pay for, we don't have a road agreement, who's going to pay for this chip and seal when it breaks down? Or do I have to drive on it?
Chris?
Forever.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, this is not atypical of a rezoning in a rural area where there are easements for access. The condition is that the applicant construct it, and then whoever works out long-term costs is going to essentially fall to a private situation. If the board is inclined not to require that condition, they certainly cannot require that condition. But DOT, looking to control dust, tries to take advantage of the situation to get dust control where we can. And so this requirement would fall on the owner to build it once thereafter would, the condition is met.
Supervisor Miller?
Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure who has the better map, but I'd like to see exactly what easement we're talking about. Could someone point that out? And is this an additional easement that is being created because of this zoning approval? Or is it existing already and it would be there anyway?
So this is the existing easement, and this is Sunkist Road.
So that's across your...
And these are the three houses that it gives access to Sunkist Road.
Okay, so there's already, that's existing already?
Right.
Okay. So what you're questioning is if there's a condition in there that requires this gentleman to pave it to prevent dust, are your, is your subdivision now responsible for that?
We're not actually a subdivision. This easement is actually, was dedicated...
For your neighborhood.
Right, for our three lots back here. So if this remained the two lots like it was supposed to be, they would access off Sunkist Road, they would not actually use our easement. To get to this third lot now, he needs to use our easement. Chip and seal is the worst thing you can imagine. I don't, I don't think anybody has a chip and seal driveway anymore. This is going to have heavy traffic. So now when that starts to break down, does the neighbor start fighting over it? Do we go to court over it? Who's going to tear it up and resurface it? Or do we just let it fall apart?
So does, is there an objection to not putting that requirement on the property owner to pave it?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Miller, typically Department of Transportation will ask for it, but historically, when we had other neighbor concern about it, the board has entertained that request and not imposed a condition. Because at the end of the day, some people like their dirt road and want to keep it a dirt road, and that's fine.
Looks like this gentleman wants to keep his dirt road.
It serves six homes, I think it is. So that's some degree of traffic, and dust is an issue, but please, sir.
But it's the difference between adding one home, one more home, and the drivers on that one more home than what it would be right now.
It's triggered this request from Transportation to do a chip seal. Sir?
No, I'd like to also go back to staff's comment about this being a one-time individual. The ones I have marked here qualify for that. So if they're going to come in with that two point nine acre lot, is staff saying that that's going to be separate, they're not going to approve it when they've already approved it one time, if these are exactly the same conditions?
That's certainly the prerogative of the board as it comes forward.
Oh, then what they're saying is you're setting a precedent by doing this today for all these other lots.
Not necessarily. It's not a precedent. It's not at that magnitude.
It looks like it, because it's the exact, these people are doing the exact same thing.
I understand your concern about it. You're correct.
Okay.
But it's not necessarily a precedent that they could hold us to in court or something like that, is what my comment refers to.
And what would they be denied on?
Doesn't, it's a rezoning that...
It's a case-by-case basis.
Okay. Exact conditions, and they couldn't refer back to the exact condition already approved by the board.
They could, but that's completely the board's prerogative to continue that or not.
Be aware that that's, there's already been two neighbors that have indicated interest, actually, these three.
Well, that's troubling.
So they're coming.
Is there something we could put in there, Chris, that would help us with this a little bit, so we look into the future a little bit? Mr. Huckleberry, you have any ideas? Oh, he's there.
I think that my, we've all agreed with the Haymores and gave them the approval for a variance.
Sure, I get it.
Nobody has approved the idea of a zoning. All the people that signed the variance letter, none of them approved the zoning. We've all agreed with the variance. It sounds like staff says they can do a variance. We wouldn't open up this Pandora box of rezoning if we went that route. I'd, my suggestion is to stay with that route, we'll support it, but lead to zoning requests that could impact this neighborhood for twenty years.
Any comments you have, Chris?
Mr. Chairman, I think whenever there is a nearby rezoning in the area that's requested, they could come in today, tomorrow, regardless of what happens. But we will look at the record, certainly the findings with the board's motion is part of the permanent record. Again, this one is very nuanced, where it is just short the required square feet. So if one were to come in down the road, we'll look at it regardless of the outcome today. And staff will make a recommendation, Planning and Zoning Commission will make a recommendation, the board will make a decision, regardless of what happens today.
Okay.
I was just saying, there's eight where they're qualified.
I understand.
With these subdivisions, okay.
There's eight that were qualified.
Right. And three have indicated they would want to do it. So now we're, now we're just getting, we're going to that next step, and the next step beyond that is to just SR two zoning. beyond that is to just SR2 zoning.
And most likely, they'll be in here anyway to come in to request these.
Well, no, if this goes, this doesn't go through, you will set it, you'll set it down to, they have not been in here all these years, they're watching this.
Well, every one is a separate and individual case. I do understand your concern.
But if this is rejected today, they're not going to spend the money to come in here and try the same thing again. That's my concern. But a variance, to me, sounds like everybody would be happy with, and I think the Haymores would be happy with it, too.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next speaker, are you done? I'm sorry.
Go ahead, yeah.
Our next speaker is John Ritchie. Mr. Ritchie, thank you for being here and being patient today, appreciate it. Please give us your name for the record.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm John Ritchie. I live at 1657 West Sunkist Road. My lot is between the Haymore and Kevin Hartman. I just want to, I'm going to reiterate some of the things that have been said, but I don't have any objection to the three families being on the property. My objection is, again, with the variance as opposed to rezoning.
He's preferred to have a variance as opposed to a rezoning.
Yes, and looking through the information from the county, they start with modification, setback requirements or lot coverage process, if you want an exception, and then, and they say modifications with an MSR are to reduce a front or yard setback to not less than 20 feet, to reduce side and rear yard setbacks, to reduce distances between structures or buildings, to exceed the accessory building, structure, or lot coverage limits, or for all other modifications, a variance request must be submitted. And so the prior lists for modifications don't apply, so I go to a variance request. And a variance request provides relief from zoning requirements that are not addressed through the MSR process, which I just said. What types of relief may I request under a variance? Zoning code requirements that are not allowed through the MSR request. And so it seems to me that, I don't see anything in the descriptions or the information that's provided about variance that would say that this is, a variance is not an appropriate way to address this. And I share Mr. Hartman's concern that if we get into a zoning request, zoning change, that that can open up the door that, to others down the road, as opposed to, it seems to me, a variance would be a one-time thing. It makes the most sense to me, and I think with the variance, we'll never be coming, nobody's going to be coming to you, or we probably won't be talking about this ever again. And again, the Haymores don't object to a variance. They changed to, from a variance to request, to a rezoning request because they were advised by the county to do that. But I think, I don't know. I don't know who's interpreting this, but I think a variance would be an appropriate solution to the issue. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate your time.
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Miller?
I'd like to ask Mr. Poirier, why wasn't a variance pursued, and what is the difference in terms of how this would be approved, and why didn't, wasn't a variance suggested for a methodology for approval?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Miller, either path could get us to the same outcome of essentially three homes on this starting parcel. We, looking at the code, understand that both paths could come to the same outcome, but the problem with Board of Adjustment is, it is quasi-judicial. They, when the Board of Adjustment is analyzing a variance, they're supposed to weigh a lot of criteria, sort of a core criterion is that it's not a self-imposed hardship. So here we have a property owner seeking to create this lot division and then kind of creating the hardship onto itself. I don't want to say that that's impossible, but that is probably not as preferred as a real land use process like rezoning offers. We have the Planning and Zoning Commission looking at it, making a recommendation, and the Board of Supervisors. One thing that, that does concern me with the neighbors is the neighbors are suggesting that there's maybe precedent that comes from a rezoning. I would disagree that there is, because every single rezoning request is looked at and evaluated individually and independently. But I also say, if there was precedent, then wouldn't there be precedent set by a variance as well? Because when we do look at variances, somebody could point to something down the street that was given a variance. So that being said, I would say the better path to have this discussion, when you're lowering lot sizes and really talking about density at the end of the day, density meaning the amount of homes per acre, rezoning is the appropriate path. We then look at the comprehensive plan, we then apply an abundance of policies and evaluations that we do not have the benefit of applying with a variance. One very key point was brought up by the chairman about rezoning conditions, how we enforce, how we apply, how we then pursue and implement permits down the line. It's easier and better for everybody then to do that with a rezoning.
That's correct.
Okay, are there any more?
Last speaker, I have one more speaker, Barbara Haymore.
My time's up.
The baton is passed on to you, Barbara. Thanks for being patient. Please give us your name for the record.
Barbara Haymore. So in commenting on the concern of the precedent, this is a Pima County GIS map, and although it's not precise acreage, it's close enough for this general discussion, we find 84 parcels in the section from Tangerine to Lemonwood and from La Cuenada to La Choya. If someone else in our area wanted to make an SR2 parcel, they would have to start with their 3.3 acre SR or some multiple of 3.3, and then happen to have an extra 1.65 acres, which is the minimum for the SR2. So that adds up to 4.95, just under five acres. Of those 84 lots, 72 of them are below that 4.95 acres and could not mathematically qualify. Of the remaining 12 lots, three of them would produce an SR2 lot significantly smaller than ours, and if we are to believe that the rezoning would be a precedent, future attempts would have to be held to that acreage of our precedence. So of the nine that remain, seven already have a house right in the middle of them. So to gain another lot, they would need to move the, their existing house or have some desire to block their own view. So that really just leaves two lots, our lot and one other comparable, though slightly smaller lot shown here. It would produce a smaller SR lot, and there is no easement to hinder two symmetrical lots, placement of two houses, and full use of the property within the rules. So is it possible that someone else could file for a rezoning? Yes, as we've heard, but we do not see any deep well of candidates with the unique merits that we have, so, just in addressing that rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ewing.
Thank you.
Okay, that concludes our speakers. Staff, you have any comments you want to make about this?
Yes, Mr. Chairman deliberating with other staff members. There is a possible idea that might help alleviate some of the, some of the neighbor concern, and that is, staff suggests considering adding Condition 7, that should read the, except for minimum lot size, the SR development standards would apply. What that does is creates development in a similar fabric of the surrounding SR. It has a greater setback for the main structure and greater controls, too, if they want to introduce corrals or other animal uses. So again, trying to keep it as SR as possible, suggesting adding the Condition 7 to require SR development standards.
Require SR minimum size, is that what you said?
Except for the minimum lot size, the SR development standards.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Miller?
So what we heard here today is that whether you get a rezoning or if you go and get a variance, there's still a possibility that others could come in to do the same. So whether we approve this today or whether they go for the Board of Adjustment, it doesn't stop the neighboring properties from coming into the board for either a rezoning or for a variance request.
Yes, that's true, but if we add the extra condition.
Right.
It makes it more difficult for them to be able to do that.
Right.
Just as some additional restriction.
And I, and I do think that that is a good solution, because if that condition is on there, that they have to develop it as an SR with the SR standards, I think it will impose those conditions. And from what I saw on these properties, you're doing minimal grading of these properties is what I saw, and this property in particular, if I recall, it was like .29 acres that you're grading on this property? Is that correct?
12,000 square feet, it must be 10%.
Yeah, and it's a 2.9, so it's about point, yeah, about a .3 acres, which is far less than what you could grade on an SR property or an SR2 property. So I would, in it, in that condition, that's, that's what this is being approved as, is with that .29 acre grading. So if we could add that condition along with the condition that Mr. Poirier just outlined, I will move approval of the P17R700010 Haymore Sunkist Road rezoning, approved subject to standard and special conditions as recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff, along with these two additional conditions identified here today.
And close public hearing.
And close the public hearing. Second.
Thank you very much. We have a motion to approve Item P17RZ00010 Haymore West Sunkist Road rezoning with the two additional conditions that were discussed by Development Services staff with us here, and close public hearing. This is a supermajority vote, so I'm going to do a roll call.
Supervisor Bronson?
Aye.
Supervisor Christie?
Yes.
Supervisor Miller?
Yes.
Supervisor Valdez?
Aye.
Chairman Elias?
Aye.
Motion carries by the zero.
Mr. Chairman, we're on the addendum agenda, I believe, now Supervisor Miller has a potential conflict with Item 2, so I'll move Items 1 and Resolution 2018-FC1 and Item 3, acceptance of Community Services Employment and Training Grant HUD Fund. Move those two items.
Second.
Motion, oh.
The motion in a second to approve Items 1 and 3 on the addendum. Discussion, objections, hearing none, motion carries. Chair will move Item 2.
Second.
Motion in a second. This is an agreement for donation and naming rights for the Raytheon Company and accepting a $250,000 donation. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we've come to the conclusion of today's agenda.
Mr. Chairman, just a point of personal privilege.
Please.
I want to, this is the Vernal Equinox.
Yes, it is.
I want to wish everybody happy spring.
Happy spring, absolutely, appreciate it. You know, and as a point of personal preference, I was, a personal privilege, I was up on Tumamok, and I saw some petroglyphs that when the sun rises and shines on those petroglyphs, the image of a dagger appears about 10 feet away, pointed towards Babukwiti on the Vernal Equinox, and then on a different petroglyph, the same thing happens on the Atamal Equinox. So it really was a feat of engineering by them, so they would understand how to plant and how to harvest, and very interesting. Anyways, we come to the conclusion of today's agenda. Thank you, everybody, for all your work and your patience.